All right, everybody, we're gonna get started for with tonight's work session. Up on the screen, if you're streaming, you can see where you can call in. You will be muted, at least at first, and we'll check and see. We have anybody on the line now?
Yes.
Do you know who they are? You wanna unmute it and find out? Hi, this is John Billups, City Hall. You called into the work session. Was there a particular issue you were looking at tonight? And would you please identify yourself?
Don, this is Leia. I was just calling in. I can't get on the, I'm not hung up yet on the stream.
Okay. So we know who that is. We'll go from there. Thanks, Leia. All right. City Council Work Session Tuesday, for Tuesday, May 26, 2020, 4:30 PM. Thomas J. Smith, Council Chambers, City Hall. First up on the proposed regular agenda for June 1st, 2020, is Public Hearing, Considerations of Plans and Specifications for the 2025th Street and Valley Street Parking Lot Project. Nick McGregor.
Good evening. The plans and specifications in front of you are to add a parking lot in the property that we acquired from BNSF on the corner of Fifth and Valley, the southwest corner. On the overhead projector, you can see the layout of the parking lot. It is, you know, just from the overhead view of the plan document, it isn't anything more than just a, you know, parking lot. Ninety-one spots are created from this parking lot. In the middle there, you can see that I-beam type formation. In the middle there, there's a crossing, and I'll explain that a little bit. And those are not actually two spots. Those are gonna be hatched out for ADA traffic purposes. And then you'll have the, on the north side, you exit out on, or you can come in and exit off of Valley. On Fifth Street, however, I think that that is probably pretty close to the quiet zone. That'll probably be a ride-in, ride-out. There is also a receiving ramp on the north side of the parking lot that would allow pedestrian traffic to cross into Nancy Navy. It also includes putting a receiving ramp at that sidewalk. Right now, it's curved. If you would hit the second slide for me, the second PDF. This shows what that center I-beam will look like. It isn't to the degree of width, but it is, it has, we have some funding that I'll talk about here in a second, but it is a, it's a bioretention cell that will help handle the storm water that comes in. There's actually two different cells. The center one and the I-beam looks, it will look similar. I don't wanna give you the perspective that it's gonna look exactly like that. It won't have as much vegetation, and it won't be as wide as to that top left. If you click, I think, I don't know, I was wrong. The bottom right-hand corner is similar. There, there's a, if you see that example, then can you go back to the PDF? I'm sorry. There's another cell to the bottom side to be able to handle all that storm water. So that's a different, little bit different type of bioretention. The center will look pretty. It'll have, you know, plant life, but it's essentially, it cleans and filters the water before it returns it back to the storm sewer. But the idea is that it's able to help slow down that water from hitting the storm water.
Okay.
And the, the funding for this, we have an IDOLs grant, an Iowa Department of Land, Ag and Land Stewardship. That was originally scheduled to go with the TAMA Building Project. At that time, it was like a $75,000 match grant, which they were using the private dollars. Because the bioretention costs on this parking lot is less, the match dollars came down to meet that. So we have about $51,000 and change worth of grant dollars to go into the, to the storm function of that. The rest of this funding, well, the overestimated price, the price is like $620,000. The rest of that is some of the money from the sale of the manor site.
All right, so we're gonna have a, it's gonna be lit?
Correct.
Have some lights there. The other thing, at one point in time, wasn't there some discussion about on the west end of that, that little triangle portion that's left? Did we acquire that as well?
We required that full triangle there, divided by the bridge.
Okay, so there was a discussion about maybe putting a dog park in there?
The...
Possibility?
Ryan Gorley and the city engineer and I went out and looked at that site. Because of the restrictions, and that's one thing that will be required of this, we have to be so far off the tracks. There has to be a certain height fence line all along there. It would've restricted what a potential dog park would've been to a very narrow space.
Okay.
And actually, in, in a lot of cases, we met with the IDOLs people, we talked about that concept, and they said that actually kinda counteracts what you're doing over there, on the retention site, because the fecal matter contributes to storm water, and if it ends up, some over scientific way of explaining the concentration of all that stuff, so, anyway. We didn't look at doing anything with this...
So the dog poop was a problem?
Well...
Sorry, Nick.
So with this project, we just plan on looking at the parking lot. We will, we do own that part on the west side of Sixth Street Bridge.
Okay.
So, I mean, there is potentially, you could do something there, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be kinda limited, because there is, there's storm lines underneath, and with the restriction of the railroad tracks and whatnot, so...
Sure. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Nick on this parking lot project?
The only question I have is, are we gonna try and get the agreement in place with the tenants across the street before we start this process?
He's talking to you about...
There's two resolutions on it.
Twenty minutes?
Yeah. All right. Hi, Don. I think he probably, no, I don't know. Number two is motion for final adoption of the ordinance amendment to the ordinance, number three, 220, ordinance creating the Sunrise West Planned Unit Development PUD overlay district by removing Outlot G from the Sun West PUD. I remember this one quite well.
No changes, just...
No changes?
Yep, taking that. Slot G out of the Sunrise West, so it can be in the Beverly Place.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Moving on, you're still here. Motion for the final adoption of ordinance rezoning Lot 4 Swisher Subdivision and Outlot G of the fourth addition to the Sunrise West subdivision from R1 to single-family, R1 single-family to R4 multi-family residential with a planned PUD overlay zone, the Beverly Place PUD, as allowed by the zoning code of the City of Burlington, Iowa.
No changes, just setting up the requirements to allow for the multifamily cooperative-type living there with landscape buffer and street connections in this area, but no changes from previous.
Any questions? Number four, resolution approving the final plot, or plat of the Oak Arbor Farm subdivision.
This is a one-lot subdivision located on the southwest corner of town, actually right on the city limit line. This red line is the city limits. This is Highway 61. Is this Hunt Road, in that general area just southwest of the airport. Looking to do a one-lot subdivision. It's this larger lot here to the east, and some of the surrounding areas, all owned by the same owner, and they wanna split off this parcel that has a residence on it in order to sell it. So they're looking just to do this one-lot subdivision. With it being on the prop, or city boundary, they do want to move forward with trying to sever this property from the city, at least this small portion here, so it's all in the county. There are no city services there. So that would, if this is approved, be brought forward at the next upcoming meeting for consideration. But that would take out about four acres of land that isn't served by any city services, so...
Does anybody have any questions on that one? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the proposed consent agenda. Number one is resolution approving an extension for the 2020, 2020, 2021 interchange of employee agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Burlington Community School District. Hi, Chief.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I have, there's two agreements there, or two exhibits, I should say. They're both similar in nature. The differences are, the differences are, one of them is 100% locally or funded by the school district, that position, the SRO, at one of the schools. The other one is 45%, and that's for just the school year only, not the entire calendar year. But it's, it's the same contract that we were under, it's just the dates have changed for the following two years.
Okay.
No, no other changes.
No other changes?
Nope.
Anybody with any questions to the chief on that one? Nope? All right, chief?
Thanks.
Thank you. Number two is resolution approving the extension to the exclusive listing agreement gross rent lease for lease of the available space of the depot, 300 South Main Street with Terrace Real Estate Group. Jim?
We had this listing a year ago, for a year, primarily to get the diner space lease arrangement negotiations worked through. That, we're just looking to renew that for an additional year. I don't know how much traction this is gonna get, but it does keep it at least listed and trying to move forward with that, that type of arrangement in the future.
Okay. Sounds good. Any questions for Jim on that? No? Number three, resolution approving lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Blalow Lofts LLC for parking spaces in the planned city parking lot out the southwest corner of Valley Street and North Fifth.
Yes, so for the construction project that Nick was talking about for that parking lot, there's 91 stalls in there. This resolution and the following is leasing up all 91 spots. Sixty in one lease agreement with Blalow Lofts, that's the first building to come online, and then the next one, 31 Churchill Lofts, will be the next one that they remodel. The timelines on them are a little different. We're looking at this lease beginning, a lease uptime beginning September 1 for these 60 spots. It's a 10-year lease with two optional five-year renewal periods on there. The initial term on that, for the first three months during lease-up, no charge for the spots, and then effective December 1, we'd be charging $40 a space per month. That would then be subject to adjustment in the rates during the 10 years, every two years. Take a look at what the comparable lease figures are within this, for other similar situated spots. There is a typo in here, so Eric, if you wanna take care of under rent in item two, it talks about how the rent would be increased periodically according to paragraph 20A. That's 19A. We must add a section that got removed.
Okay.
And that will be the same typo in both resolutions. The only difference between the two, and these are based off of really the, what we had with the Burlington apartments, for a lot of the contract language, so it's very similar to what we have in place already for possession, care, and maintenance and stuff. We have the same, we'll have the same responsibilities on this lot that we do with our other parking lots in town where we have leases. So this one, the first six, first 60, or begin this September. The only difference with the other one, the other 31 spots, same 90-day lease-up period before rent goes into, into effect, but it's an effective date. We're looking at August 1, 2021, when they would begin, when their 10-year timeframe would begin on that, those final 31 spots. Their plan is, they're on target to be in a position to start leasing on September 1 from the Blalow Building. They wanna move from doing that, the renovation on that structure, to then they'll start renovation on the, on the second structure.
So the, the other 30 spots, were, those gonna be open, parking?
For the first year.
For the first year?
Yep.
All right. Any questions? Thank you. So I took care of four and five, number, or three and four, I'm sorry. Number five is a resolution for the support of workforce housing tax credit program project by Merge Urban Development Group, Merge at 412, 424 North Third.
This is the developers with the former police station building, looking to apply for workforce housing tax credits. They may have already sent in an application, but we had a letter of support, but they're wanting a formal resolution of support as well. Part of their plans to move forward were hinged on these, acquiring these workforce housing tax credits, so I believe they're due July 1, I think, so, but they're wanting to get them in early, so this is just a support for that application.
All right. Questions?
No.
Thank you, Eric. Next up is resolution approving an offer to buy the real estate, and buy real estate acceptance for property located at 700 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Council previously approved purchasing this lot for $12,000. This is at the corner of Southernton Valley. This is just the formal offer to buy real estate and acceptance, kind of a lawyer document with the same terms, $12,000, but a lot more details in it. Sellers have signed off on this already, so it just needs council to approve it, and then mayor's signature, and then we can move forward with the transfer.
Fantastic. Any questions? No? All right. Number seven, resolution adopting the personnel manual for the non-union employees. Stephanie?
Sure. In the packet was the manual that's been updated as of July 1, 2020. We do this annually. Basically, this is covering all the people that aren't in the unions. So basically, there's only slight changes every year to this. Basically, the salary adjustments on page two, that in fact didn't change, because it's the same as it has been, 2.25% is what most non-union people we get. We do have this transition table, so where they fall back on the schedule, which is on the last page, if they're under the midpoint, they could get a little higher increase July 1. If they're at midpoint, they, and above, they'd get the 2.25, so, based on what job title there are and what range they're in. Let's see, everything, the only other thing that changed was the insurance. Let's see what page that's on. This year, it's gone up to 10% contribution for employees, with max at 20, or, sorry, 75 for single coverage and 100 for family per month. So that got updated too. And then the salary table itself got, each, each category was increased by 2%, and that's to help with our compression issues with the, you know, the union contracts and their increases that have gone up, so.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions or...
The union contracts are up until October?
Yeah, they, this is the final year.
Yep.
So they'll expire June 30 of '21.
When do we start the process of...
We'll start that in the fall. I know, they, I think they start their elections in September, so they all have to recertify that they wanna still be a union, and then, I assume we don't start negotiations till after that, so...
And then how much of an impact will those negotiations have on what this looks like next year? We don't know?
I'm sure. It all, I mean, again, fire and police have different union benefits that they can negotiate than the other union now and non-union, so...
Any questions, guys? Thank you, Stephanie. Are you up for the next one?
Yep, I'm up for the next one.
Resolution approving the amendment between CWA, Local 7176, and the City of Burlington.
So we just have to do a quick amendment to the salary schedule for CWA, based on you guys approving the, the part-time evidence clerk going full-time. So in the current union contract, we only had a part-time wage in there, so we had to add the full-time hourly wage effective July 1, 2020. So of course, when you add something to the contract, we have to get it approved by the union, which we do have to sign off, and the chief has signed off, so this is the last step to get that pay rate in there.
Sounds good. Number nine, resolution Burlington is the essential, is essential in the support of fair, direct federal emergency support to reopen and rebuild local American economies.
This is, well, going back to the question, but next year, when we come to the, this, the Personnel Policy Manual, we've typically been, when we do the wage increases, we try to match what's in the union contracts, so this tends to follow what happens with union contracts to try to keep some level of comparability, so it really, next year, when we get to this discussion, it will be kinda dependent on where we are with unions. However, the unions may all be, I mean, we've been able to have comparable solutions with our, all of our unions in the past. That may be a little bit different moving forward, just with, there's a different dynamic between employee groups, so we'll have to kinda play that by year as we get into next year.
Okay.
This resolution, National League of Cities is starting an effort seeking federal funding at, for local, for the local level. They're seeking consideration of up to 500 billion to make up for lost revenues, increased expenditures that local governments have, have been impacted and will be impacted over the next three years. And they're looking at that on a three-year cycle, when they're trying to figure out what's kinda the number that the overall impact is. If we look at where we've been impacted, and it's talked about in one of the whereses down here, our sales tax collections are down, hotel motel tax collections, property tax collections, transit fare collections, parking fee collections, ambulance revenue, I think we had a couple of months where we're 10% down on a number of calls. Road use tax collections, gaming revenues, license fees, program registration, utility revenues, they're all impacted.
Mm-hmm.
And we know there's a significant, that's a big hit upfront, but that's gonna be something that lingers into the next couple of years before we get back to normal. So this is something that we'll be following after this resolution. We'll be showing our support with that coordinated effort with the National League of Cities, trying to seek out that funding.
Hopefully, hopefully they get the results. Thanks, Jim. Ten, we're gonna set a date for public hearings, June 15, 2020. One is consideration of sale of property lot two of Park View subdivision 707 Shokan Drive of City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. B would be consideration of permanent encroachment agreement with CMM Co. LC for encroachment into the Market Street right away adjacent to the 107 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa. And C is consideration for an amendment to the urban revitalization tax abatement plan. Moving on to discussion items, first up is treasurer's report.
So April's treasurer's report is in there. It's pretty much, I was comparing it to last April, the ending fund balance is pretty similar. We haven't done transfers, so we're back in the positive for the general fund, because we had our tax revenue come in in April, but we're still, there's more money that will get transferred into the general fund. The deficit accounts that are showing are ones that we expect. You've got the Recplex, the Golf Course, our projects, Mazel. The flood account is showing quite a bit, which we still have quite a bit outstanding with FEMA to get reimbursed and get projects closed out, and then also with insurance, our flood insurance. So, again, Tiger Grant, that's always behind, so if anybody has any questions, I don't think anything looked out of the ordinary.
Anybody?
No.
Thank you. Next up is the firearm simulator. I assume that would be the chief.
Just a short presentation on our firearm simulator that we've been working on for, well, for me, for the last couple of years, and kinda go through what we did at the police department, the reasons for doing it. The purpose of this, this project is, we, we spend a lot of time, our firing range, our outdoor firing range is up at Big Hollow, and, you know, we train at least, we do at least four different qualifications a year. And each time we go up there, it's basically a two-hour training time for each officer going up there, so the expense is something that we need to keep in mind. So we looked at some other options to get more training, and we looked at options for scenario-based training, which is important for the different things that officers may encounter throughout their day on duty, so. We looked for something that was an affordable alternative, and like I said, the overtime cost, we figure into the budget every year for those, for training sessions, and as you know, sometimes our overtime budget gets out of hand, so we're looking for a solution that'll give the officers the training they need for, to improve their proficiency and their confidence, and, and just introduce them to some scenarios that they don't routinely find themselves in throughout the day, which I'm thankful for. The project funding for this simulation range that we purchased and have installed, the project itself was $38,207. The 2018 JAG grant funded about $22,000 of that. In that grant, it's allotted, it's allotted money to our department with the Sheriff's Department as what they call a disparate agency in our, in our area. So we apply for the grant, we get the grant, but we have to provide, provide some equipment or some of the funds to the Des Moines County Sheriff's Department. So I spoke with them and got their cooperation, and, and they thought it'd be a good idea to have this machine available to them, so it, I, I looked at those dollars there and asked them for an in-kind contribution on top of the 22,000, and as you see there below, both them and the West Burlington Police Department contributed to this project and have access to our building and access to this equipment at the police department. We also got a, a nice donation from the Witty Foundation. They had contacted us, contacted us, wanted to know what, what they could do to help us, and I thought I'd put it towards this project, which is a, a good solution for what we're trying to do with the firearms training. There was a room down in the basement when we moved into the new police department, that was the, the basement-level vault. It was just four concrete walls, basically, or three concrete, yeah, three concrete, four concrete walls with a doorway entrance, so the acoustics in there was terrible, so we had to do some whiteboxing to finish that off and accomplish that, and we, of course, had to bring it up to code with the fixtures that were in there, and do some, I guess, a little bit of, just a little bit of soundproofing, so it didn't echo quite so bad in there, so it'd be a good instructional area for the equipment. We originally were on schedule February 24 to have that installation done shortly after that, with the COVID-19 restricting travel and the ability for the company to come install this piece of equipment, so we delayed it, and finally, they contacted us when it started to open back up, and, and the installer came and spent about four days, two days to install it, and a couple of days of training how to run the equipment for the firearms instructors, for us, the Sheriff's Department, and West Burlington. The guidelines for instructional use on the SIM range is, I'm very careful with that and very particular. This is not, this is not a piece of equipment that's a toy. The access is restricted to, to the command staff and the firearms, firearms instructors that are trained to run the equipment and the scenarios, to keep it in proper working order and, and used correctly by both us, the Sheriff's Department, and West Burlington Police Department. This is the range set up downstairs in the, in the simulation room. You can see some of the equipment we have there, on a table in there, and that's the screen with the projector and the sound system that's in that area, just to kinda give you an overview of that. The SIM range comes with numerous force options. We had to provide a couple handguns for the CO2 working action. I wanted something for this equipment that had an actual action that worked on the firearms, so they would have the feel of it real, rather than just having like a, like a, like a Nintendo gun in their hand with a laser. Two of those guns that are just trigger-activated laser do come with the machine, but these extras for the handguns and the AR-15, which is another piece of equipment we have available to the officers in their working, in their car. They also have a taser, which is, which is kinda like a, a laser and pepper spray capability. And also, there's, there's, the instructor upon voice commands when the officers in their training can deviate from one, one option to another in the scenarios. This is just one of the officers down there training on the SIM range itself, a target acquisition accuracy they can work on, and as you know, ammunition costs money, the time up there costs money, and this way, they can work on their target acquisition, their sight alignment, accuracy, and everything there, just getting on target just a little bit faster. Here's another scenario, an officer going through there, shoot, don't shoot, of course, different, different scenarios that allow for that. I think in total, there's close to 1,000 different scenarios with options on each, each one of those scenarios. This is just showing you one of the, one of the simulations, the officer's going through scenario-based training. This is another one. I, I put this slide on here just for reference, the, as you can see, the reaction time of the officer's a little bit slower than the guy in the car, so... the officer is a little bit slower than the guy in the car, so hopefully this will improve when we get our reaction time in a, in a more efficient manner. So if you have any questions about that or concerns or any, anything else you'd like to know, I'll take some questions.
I'd be interested in seeing a demonstration of it sometime, chief, if you could arrange it.
Yeah.
No, I don't want to play with it, I don't want to watch somebody go through it.
No, I'd be happy to have you come down, I'll get you with one of the firearms instructors and, and they can probably run you through a couple of scenarios, get your blood pressure up a little bit and.
Oh, I'd like to come and see that if I could.
See, now you're interested.
No, I don't have any interest in, in playing with it, but I do have interest in watching him go through it. Oh, whatever. No, it would be great, I would, just to, to see what it looks like, but that looks like it's going to be a nice piece of equipment for training.
Yeah, just give me some time, anyone who is welcome to come down and, and look at it. It is, I think it's something that we've needed for a long time and this is, I know it's, the price tag is $38,000 and somebody may say, you know, how much ammunition does that buy, but we, it's hard for us to replicate those scenario-based environment at the range, just shooting at a static target.
And it doesn't buy that much ammunition anymore these days either.
No, it does not.
So it does not take long to get to that number.
So that's our, that's our project from the 2018 JAG grant, so.
Good, fantastic.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Next up on discussion, summer reading program. There she is. Hi, Rhonda.
Hello. Thank you for this time tonight to talk a little about summer reading. We do this every year around this time, obviously this year's a very different year and so I want to talk to you about what that's going to look like. We do summer reading, planning year-round. As soon as this one year ends, we start planning the next years, figuring out what went well, what we need to tweak and we start booking performers in September because the good ones get booked early and also because we work with other local libraries to try to coordinate and get a better deal by having several in the area. So we've been working on summer reading and beginning of March, we were looking at each other thinking, we're ahead of schedule, this is going great, we are ready. And of course, then by the end of March, we were looking at each other and saying, okay, we need to start over, not completely start over, but, but retool the whole program. The theme this year is imagine your story. We're part of, throughout the state of Iowa, there's a cooperative that also other states in the country use as well that have the same theme. And I was telling the staff members that I think we really, the real theme should be reimagine your story because everything is about reimagining how we're going to do things now, that they picked these themes well in advance. So we had to reimagine how to do summer reading and we looked at the key components that we always have as part of our program and figure out how to make those work in today's environment. The other thing is we had to make those kind of decisions a while ago because we typically would go in April or May into the schools and do, we would do, we would do addresses, I don't know why all of a sudden I can't think of the word, but we would do assemblies, that's what I was trying to think of, we would do assemblies there where we would show videos or we would do skits. And this year we had the SEC class, just like we did last year, do a video for us, so we were all ready to do that. We couldn't do that, of course, this year, so instead we got materials ready to hand out for students. And so as we're making all those decisions, you know, back in April and early part of this month, we had to take into account the, the current environment. So we looked at our, how we could do that. So this is just our webpage and you can go to this today and see some of the different components and how we have, have reworked some of the things. A lot is still the same. We are still doing activities, learning opportunities for kids, we're still having programs that, that people can do, but we're also still doing tracking your reading, which we've done every year and providing incentives for kids to continue reading through the summer. We have five programs like we have been, we have a babies and toddlers program, we have children, tweens, teens, and then an adult program as well. So all those things are, are very similar to what we've had in the past, but a little bit has changed with the way that we are offering those. So our June calendar is already posted on our website and available, we'll also be sending it out in our newsletter and so people will be able to take a look at what we have, but one of the things that you'll notice on this calendar, if you can read it, it's kind of small there, but is the word Zoom is on there a lot, Facebook Live is on there a lot. All of our programs in June are going to be virtual programs. And as we talked to other libraries and looked at what they're doing, that's very much on par with what's happening in other libraries in our area and our state and throughout the country. Some libraries have already decided they're going to do virtual the whole summer. We're holding back on our July calendar to kind of see what we're going to be doing. So we, usually at this time, I would have both June and July calendars to show you for this presentation, but we're waiting a little bit to, to see how that's going to look. One of the nice things Ben, these performers that we work with every year, we have different, some of them we've worked with for many years, some of them are new, but all these performers have been very good about helping libraries out and working with them on converting what they usually do into some kind of virtual option. And so you can see the, the one, the magician there, example I put up is going to be on Zoom and live stream. One of the things that we found is that Zoom is nice because the performer can see the audience and there can be some participation. Facebook Live, we really like because we can put that out there and then people can go back and watch it later at a time that's convenient for them. So each format has its benefits. The, the one below that, we actually had booked one show with this group and they decided to give libraries 13 shows, as long as they were going virtual, they might as well give them all their shows. So we're going to have 13 different performances that are going to be available for people and we'll be rolling those out throughout the summer. So each performer is doing a little something different. We had a couple that just weren't comfortable with going virtual and aren't doing that at all, but most of them were, were happy to accommodate the libraries because they say, most every library that I know of, that I've talked to is doing virtual programs. So they're changing up for everybody, not just for us.
Rhonda, was it the format they thought wouldn't work for them or they just weren't comfortable using it or you don't know?
Yeah, I think some of them, it was, I think it depends a little bit on what their performance is.
Okay.
And I think some of them are, if they're really a lot of interactive stuff with the kids, it's harder to do that in an online environment. So I think some of those folks, I know for, this isn't for summer reading, but, well, sort of, our, our First Friday program that we usually do, that's be an adult program to come to.
For the seniors, yeah.
Yeah. We've had performers who we've hired for that who've said, I'm not comfortable with the technology part of it too, so it's been a mix.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, getting used to all these technologies has been fun for everyone, so. So still a very full calendar of events. One of the things that I'm really glad about is that our staff is, some of these that you'll see on there are things that we'll be doing, like the virtual storytime, the wiggle time, the baby gardens on Zoom, the virtual yoga, those things that we've already been doing those. From the very first day that our building closed, we did a virtual storytime. And so they have had lots of practice and are very comfortable with doing those. So some libraries weren't doing those virtual programs during this time and so, you know, we'll have a much smoother transition, I think, into the summer when it's really busy or comfortable doing those virtual things. So that's where we're at in terms of the program side of things. The other big piece is the tracking incentivizing reading. And so we've gone to an app and this app's Read Squared and you can just get that in the Play Stores. I took a snapshot of my phone today, so you could see, I have already signed up for the adult program. It's very simple to sign up, you download the app and you choose your library and then create a username and password. You do have to give your age, but I'm glad to say that for adults, we're all 19-plus, that's all you got to put in, you know, to put an exact age. So I was happy to just put that in. Right now it's in countdown mode, it's, well, when I ran this earlier today, we were just about five and a half days away from the start of summer reading, because summer reading starts next Monday, it's just hard to believe that we're already at that point. But with this, there will also be another opportunity to see the library's calendar of events there and to link into those things. And you also, through the app, will be able to track reading, there will be some reading lists and suggestions and things like that that are in there too. It has a lot of bells and whistles we're getting to learn because we chose this one in April and I really happened to get to, to know it quickly and figure out how all of it works. So I'm happy though and excited that we'll be able to offer it. I will say though, that we do have some paper versions too and now that we are doing curbside pickup, we'll be offering those as some people can pick up as well, if they're more comfortable with that. So particularly for our adult program, we're going to have those available and not make everyone use the app, but the app experience is good, there's also different kinds of activities and challenges in the app, you earn badges, so different fun things we're able to add with that. So, you know, as I was putting this presentation together, I looked at last year's and I was taking stuff out and changing things up and it was a little sad because summer reading is one of my favorite things that we do. There's so much energy, there's so much activity at the library, I love seeing families bringing their kids in and kids coming up to check out a stack of books almost as tall as they are, all of those kind of things. And, you know, we have programs that get 100, 200 kids showing up, a lot of the, the day camps and things would come. So it's not going to be that kind of summer this year, but we are still going to have all of the components that we usually have and offer. And I also kind of bring myself back to why we're doing it and I know if you saw my presentation last year, you've seen some of these statistics, but this to me is really the core of why we do this. We want it to be fun, we want there to be things for kids to do in the summer, but what we are really trying to do is prevent learning loss and that summer slide, as you can see on here, 52% of parents with kids who are six to 17 haven't heard of summer slide. They may not have heard of that term, but I think a lot of people are familiar with the fact that when kids come back in the fall, there's some time spent getting them back to where they were when they left in the spring because there's often some kind of learning loss over that time because they're not in the classroom. And so this year, probably more than ever, that's going to be something that's important to have, learning opportunities and activities for kids through the summer, given that they, they haven't been in a school, traditional classroom for quite some time. So this gives some statistics about the amount of money spent to retrain kids, the amount of time it takes for teachers, amount of things they lose to me, the, the middle statistic there, two to three hours of reading a week helps prevent kids from having learning loss. And when you break that down, it's 15 to 20 minutes a day and that's really what we're promoting, is kids reading a little bit every day and that to help with that learning loss. And this gives you another way to look at it, they say here in the statistic that two-thirds of the achievement gap by the time kids are in ninth grade can be attributed to this summer learning loss or summer slide. So you can see kids that have learning opportunities continue to go up, kids who don't have those opportunities, don't read during the summer, don't have other kinds of enrichment activities, they fall behind, have to catch back up, fall behind and catch back up and it has a cumulative effect to where you have this achievement gap. One of the other things that I always think is, it's powerful for me at least, is that because it accumulates like this, even at these very young ages and probably particularly at these very young ages, kids who slide back, have to catch back up, slide back, they end up having this early achievement gap and we, and we know that from statistics and things that the kids who are in third grade are, and aren't at reading level are the same kids who are most likely not to graduate from high school. And so we really want to prevent that kind of learning loss and frustration that they would experience and give them the best opportunity that we can. That last line in, in this particular piece where it says that, you know, falling, continue to fall behind every summer, eventually making the gap too great to close, that, that just gets me every time. I don't ever want to think of a little third grader having a gap that's too great to, to close. So I hope that we can, with the other kinds of activities that we do through the library, helping kids become ready to learn when they go into school, building those early literacy skills and then also supporting them through the summer to prevent learning loss, that's really what it's all about, that's why it's, it's one of my favorite things that we do is because we can help make a difference for those kids. So I say, that brings us back to imagining your story, which is what we will start doing next week. I think we're pretty well geared up to get going with it. I say, it's going to be different as I talk to other libraries in the area and I put this into my column in the Hawkeye on Sunday, this is Sunday before, but they, the director at West, West Point was telling me, you know, it's not going to be the summer we planned, but we're going to do the best we can. And I think that's really where we're at, is it's not the summer we planned it to be, but we're going to try to keep everything going as best we can so that we can accomplish those goals and keep those key components moving forward. So that's where we're at with summer reading.
Outstanding. Anybody have any questions on that?
I know we've been promoting it at the Notre Dame Facebook page, so hopefully we'll have some kids sign up for it.
Yes.
And Counsel, if you ever have a chance to go read, virtual readings, it's, it's all right, except just don't read it. Amelia Bedelia, I got set up on that one, Allison.
Funny.
Yeah, that was very well handpicked, I think, Amelia Bedelia becomes the mayor or talks about being the mayor, yeah, so that was good. Thank you for coming and doing that.
Her parents are all upset about with the mayor, yeah, I, I felt the love on that one.
So yeah, she's, she's still doing those and will be through the summer, so I'm sure she would welcome some guests.
It's, it's well worth it. Thank you for your efforts.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rhonda. Great program.
Okay, next up is the Perkins Park House.
Give a memo in your packet, kind of outlining, apparently there's a single-family residence in Perkins Park that's been used as a rental for quite some time now. Previously was, has been occupied traditionally by a city staff member where they had responsibilities to clean some of the shelters and restroom in the park. Over the last few years, it transitioned into a market rate rental where those duties were no longer the responsibility of that person, they're no longer a staff member. Just found it difficult to find someone that wanted to live there and do those things every night, lock up, clean out the bathrooms and then also reside in, in that house and work for the city, so it's just a complicated thing, but transitioned to just a market rate rental over the last few years. Previous tenant did move out recently and so staff, the building inspector, park superintendent, myself went through the building to see what was needed to rehab or fix up the property to make it a, a quality rental again. And I can say, I was in the building probably 15 years ago, it's not much worse than it was 15 years ago, but it has seen some decline, especially I think with the last tenant, just didn't take very good care of the property, but it, it's seen its better days regardless. So this is the exterior porch, has some rot and kind of a, a nest in that front porch. A lot of the interior doors are, I guess, worn, need replaced, all the, basically all the flooring needs replaced, all new paint. Kitchen is as it was 15 years ago, just a sink and a stove and a fridge, appliances are outdated. Bathroom, a lot of the doors need replaced as well. The bathroom, the sink for the bathroom, this is one, the one bathroom in the whole rental is just right around the corner of the toilet there, so you basically have to be sitting on the toilet to access the sink in the bathroom, just not a good layout, something that would need to be updated and replaced as well. Again, some of the doors, flooring, paint, carpeting, exterior, porches needing replaced or repaired. The siding doesn't look too bad, but a lot of the trim, soffit fascia would need upgrades and replaced. We would advise doing the siding if it were to be rehabbed, just to make it maintenance-free. But then again, it remains a park, a single-family home in the middle of the park. Getting some of the estimates together, just for the indoor rehab items is estimated around $31,000, $32,000. That didn't include some of the interior doors that may need to be replaced. Exterior items, which would be completely removed, replaced siding, soffit windows, trim, was $12,000 and replacing exterior doors was $14,500 for all the exterior rehab, so just a ballpark estimate around $46,000 was getting some contractors to look at it, our inspectors and staff to rehab the property. They get a bid to demo it and also to remove the fence around the property and then there's some asphalt on the top there where they parked, that's pretty broken up, was $7,600 and here is $6,000, that didn't. And here is six thousand, that didn't include some of the other items. So deed for the property from the Perkins family nineteen twenty-seven states the property shall be dedicated and forever used as a public park and shall be kept in order by the city. We had this discussion a little bit with the Apple Trees building. If that wasn't maintained, the option was to demo it. We couldn't sell the property. We couldn't do anything but have a long-term lease to have some specific uses, kind of institutional uses there. You couldn't come in with a commercial business. Had to kind of still meet some of those guidelines of the park. But based on the cost and then based on staff time management, we're not a landlord, park staff or the city in general. Not good landlords at least. We'd recommend removing the structure. The rent, annual rent, I think is five hundred and fifty dollars a month was the rent term. But then we do have some gaps when we're trying to refill that space and then obviously fixing it up over time. We just don't see that revenue, replacing some of those rehab costs and then long-term time, staff time and management. So that would be staff's recommendation would be to remove the structure, make it part of the park system as a whole and not have to work or deal with tenants and those issues down the road.
We can't sell it? There's no way we can sell it?
No, the park has to be kept.
I mean, just parcel it out. We couldn't just cut that little parcel out and sell it?
The deed states the entire park. We have to offer back to the Perkins family, I believe. I'd have to look at that more clearly.
Does it have any historical significance at all?
Not, not part of that original Perkins estate. The, the other building had more significance that was part of the estate than this one.
So you, you want to say that you can sell it?
I, I would first say we can sell. I mean, the home and just looking at the home, the home is not in what I would consider to be demolishable state. The number of people in this community that are looking for housing. I agree with you, we shouldn't be, shouldn't be in the landlord business. But if we haven't asked the question whether or not we can parcel that out and sell it, I'd like to know the answer to that first.
We discussed, staff wouldn't recommend having someone else own land in the middle of our park, but that would be your best decision, so.
I think it would be attractive if it was fixed up to have somebody that managed the parks live there. I mean, I know DNRs do things like that.
It used to be like that.
And it offsets their salary and they get a place to live. And I, I think it could be in, down the line somewhere, a recruiting retention thing for us for staff.
It's a difficult thing to have a rental as if you want a supervisor level staff to live in a rental.
Yeah.
We have an individual that mows there. It's three days a week that they're mowing there. Used to be a full-time, not a full-time, but their job was to maintain Perkins all summer and they were just dedicated Perkins now. Through reductions and kind of some of the streamlining, we have someone there three days a week. So there, there are in other parks as well, so it's not just a.
Yeah, maybe not have it be a rental capacity, but that was part of their salary package. The DNR does that. And then they, they can fix it up. It's like their family home while they have that job. I don't know, just an idea. I hate to see it just torn down.
Well, I, I would, yeah, I would not really want to have a private owner in the middle of the park. That, that would not appeal to me because then you're going to be dealing with issues. And I also one hundred percent agree that the city is not a great landlord. You know, the city staff tries hard, but it's not their, it's not their business. But I also agree with, with Councilman Rinker and Murray that it's, it would be a shame to throw it away. At fifty-four thousand, it include the asphalt, you're looking at five, six hundred dollars a month. You're around seventy-two months to get a payback.
How many, how many square feet is it?
I don't know offhand.
What about beds and baths? One bath and how many beds?
One bathroom. I think there's three small rooms upstairs and one bedroom downstairs technically.
So technically four.
They, yeah, I think one of the bedrooms upstairs was maybe a, yeah, it was pretty small, but.
To rent at that bathroom situation, we have to be totally redone. And you don't have that in there, right?
There, that is.
Is, is it, oh, the all update, okay. All right, twelve thousand, right?
I mean, the rent's really low. As somebody who works in the industry, it's, I mean, that's two thirds of what it probably should be. It could be eight fifty easily if redone. So when you say that it's not going to return, the return's not going to be there for the investment that you've outlined in here. I don't know if that's necessarily true, but I don't, I've never been in the home, so I couldn't tell you. You're right. So years ago, I had a friend who lived there, his dad took care of that park. And that was the, kind of the deal is he could live in the house, but he had to take care of the park.
Yeah, I think it could be an attractive package for somebody down the line.
I still have a hard time tearing down a decent house.
How quickly you need a decision?
We would like to know before, well, as quickly as possible. If we're going to remove it, we, some funds available, but.
How would, would everybody be agreeable to go in for a tour of the place?
Oh, yeah.
Get a better assessment of it? Would they, could you set that up?
Yeah.
Okay. Is the house in a condition that can be moved? At somebody else, somebody else's expense, obviously?
Yeah, I.
That's a good idea.
We can, I can check with our inspectors on that. It'd take quite a bit. It's got a stone foundation and different levels in the basement. I don't know if it'd stay together. I would advise wearing a mask when you come, the second floor is pretty nasty.
Okay, well, let's, let's put together a quick tour so we can go look at it. Because I'll be honest with you, I didn't even know where it's at. When I saw that in the pack, I thought, I'm going to drive there because I don't recall seeing it. So would you, would you be available for that?
Yeah, I don't.
Everybody? So let's, you know, we'll take separate cars with a social distance and we'll, we'll bring a mask.
Let us know when you're ready. I can arrange that.
Okay, that would help, I think, make it, help, at least it'd help me, Eric, to make a decision.
Do you want to do that this week or?
Yeah.
The other thing is, and before we do it, I would want to be interested, and I don't have a problem reaching out to a few organizations in the community that I know that need housing for people for certain issues, whether it's, maybe, maybe it's a great opportunity for this house to be in the network for the home of shelter or something like that. Where we have a long-term lease, make the investment, have a long-term lease that ensures that we get a rate of return that covers our investment, but then we also, you're kind of subleasing it at that point or they're subleasing it. So then they're managing the tenant, we're not doing that, taking care of something like that. So anyways, just out of use.
Just, let's, uh, let's, let's do the tour and then we'll go from there, we'll kick it around.
Do you want me to reach out to all of you or do you, someone want to coordinate that or just let me know?
I'm coordinating.
Just, just let me know what time this week and we'll make that one.
What works, what's best day for everybody?
Pull up your calendar.
I'm ready.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday or Friday?
Thursday, Friday?
Thursday afternoon would be better.
Thursday afternoon.
Thursday, two o'clock?
Thursday, two o'clock works for me.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, I'll figure out where it's at and I'll meet you there. So I'll, I'll reach out to Robert, let him know. Okay. Let's do that and then we'll, we'll circle back and talk about it once again, Eric. Okay? Next up is.
Are we meeting there then?
Yeah, we're going to meet there. Two o'clock on Thursday.
Seventeen twenty, Del Street.
You can't miss it. If you go to pull into Perkins Park, it's right there on the left-hand side.
What's that?
We do two separate meetings to.
Oh, because of the group of five?
Be best of all.
Okay, we probably, yeah. Well, it won't take how long, don't go through there.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, so.
Two and two fifteen and two thirty or something.
We got two at a time, two council people at a time, so let's do two, two fifteen and I'll wait and do the last. How about that? That way we're all separate. Okay, so don't congregate and don't talk, you guys. We'll get, we'll do that, Eric, thanks. All right, back up to park plans. You're still up, sir.
So we wanted to go through, kind of, we've gotten a lot of questions and we have a lot of questions just on park reopening and plans. And today's press conference and proclamation answered some of those questions as well. But we as kind of park staff met last week and talked about what are some options for reopening. Currently shelters, restrooms, playgrounds, pool, and RecPlex. All these things are impacted by the proclamation of the governor and kind of where they're at with things. So this was just updated today after the governor's proclamation. But wanted your input if you have questions or input or want to see changes or any advisement on this. But looking to open shelters, June fifth for reservation, currently they're closed. We're able to open June first at fifty percent capacity. So we want to update the website on what that means for people that want to have reservations. Part of the proclamation stated the gathering organizer is responsible to make sure it's fifty percent capacity. All capacities for shelters are listed on our website when you reserve, so you know what that number is. Also ensure social distancing and cleaning, so we want to get those posted and make sure people are aware when they make reservations what they're responsible for and what they're allowed to do. Restrooms, still checking on this. I, so wanted to see what we're able to do or what we're required to do or if we're able to open those. Wanted to try, wanted to try and coordinate that with the shelters to ensure that people have restroom access. But knowing we have one part-time staff person that cleans all the restrooms, empties all the trash cans, so they're getting to these spots once a day maybe. So making sure people are aware that these aren't cleaned every hour on the hour like a normal restroom in a restaurant. This is an outdoor park restroom, so when we open them, that people are aware. If you're not comfortable, don't use them. If you want to take precautionary measures, certainly do that. But parks have been open for quite a while now without restrooms and go before you go and leave when you have to. So that's something we're still checking on what's, what we're able to do and what, what's required there. Drinking fountains, those are going to be closed until further notice. Advise people to just bring in your own water. Those are difficult things, especially with kids getting their mouth right up on the water fountain, touching the surface. That there's some concerns there, but certainly bring in your water and your containers, your reusable containers to the parks. Playgrounds are able to open June first, so those will be open June first. They are still closed. Again, those will not have regular cleanings. Those are just open to those that use them. And always advise what your comfort, comfort level is or what you want to do. They're open, but it doesn't mean you have to go there immediately or if you, you don't feel comfortable. Summer camp, looking to, planned to open June eighth. That was our targeted timeline based on the school openings, our school closings. We have contacted all parents that had signed up and let them know kind of our process and procedures. We do have a, a process laid out of screening when they come in. Having limited attendees, generally we allow up to fifty, looking to limit that to forty so that we can have groups of eight kids and two counselors. And then those are individual groups that aren't interacting necessarily with each other, at least for the time being. So it'll be using Perkins Park as where the summer camp operates out of the shelter house there. So that shelter house will be closed to reservations so that we can distance a little bit more. And then them, that camp will be using that restroom as well, so that'll be a lot for their use that we can have regular, regular cleaning for the kids that are using the summer camp. Pool, they have allowed swim lessons and lap swim only until June seventeenth. We're not open at this time. We weren't planning to open originally until probably this weekend or next weekend. But uncertain on our opening time at this point. I guess this would be one, we lose money there every year. It'd be very difficult to do swim lessons or lap swim at that facility. Cleaning the shelter or the pool house, I guess we would probably recommend not to open until further advisement or we're able to open where we're not so limited. We have concerns over face coverings, ability to clean, just staffing levels, how that's going to operate. We have seen so many, majority pools that we've seen are either waiting or have closed for the season. So we've kind of in a wait and see, we're not recommending to open at this time. But wanted, that'd be one we, let's see if you had any recommendations on any change of that course, but.
Yeah, I've reading, I've, I've been reading a lot of pools are not opening this year.
Yeah.
So that would, that's probably why it's.
Golf course is open. There is a tee time required that has been open per the governor's allowance. We do have interior social distancing and reduced capacity when the interiors open. In the past week, ours did as well, but we still do, do require the tee times. Single-use carts are available. That does limit a little bit of how many people can be on the course at once. So if everyone's taking their own cart, even the course might look full. It is a little more limited capacity because we can't make tee times where we don't have carts available. Leagues were delayed until larger groups, so that'll be something we're still looking at, trying to get those started up. RecPlex, looking to open to schedule, or has been open to scheduled limited practices of ten or less with batting cage by reservation. June sixth and seventh is the first tournament, which will be allowed under the proclamation. It's a girls softball tournament, so it's something Kirk and the organizer will have to reach out and see how many teams are still willing or wanting to come. Originally had thirty-six teams signed up, but don't know, not all of them had paid and don't know if parents or teams are going to make decisions not to travel or to travel. So that will be something we'll have to monitor and see how many teams actually follow through on that. And then looking at June ninth for the softball leagues to start. With the tournament, looking to implement the social distancing, further requirements, not have the seating, the RecPlex seating fully open, not having the interior open, having the outside window for concessions. The teams will pay a gate fee, so there won't be entrance fee or stopping to pay as you come through the gate. The teams have already covered that. So trying to limit that and then doing some cleaning, but encourage take your lawn chairs, spread out along the sides to watch. Possibly do some scheduling where teams aren't there all day. You can go and maybe leave after your games and come back, so. So that's kind of the overview of where we're at with the parks, a lot of different divisions there and kind of changes as things change with the governor and a lot changed today to open some of that up. Want to see if you guys have any questions or comments or concerns over what we're looking to do.
No, that disappoints me about the pool. Maybe more research will come out. They believe the chlorine kills it, but you have to worry about the locker rooms and other things.
A lot of the recommendations to open is face coverings on the deck and in the pool house and that's just so difficult to manage or do at this time.
Supervised, yeah.
But the governor hasn't even allowed anything other than lap swim or swim lessons at this time.
Yeah, like I say, as more information comes out, maybe those recommendations will change. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. All right, next up, citywide cleanup program. Mr. Fiddy.
That's where we go.
Welcome, Dawn.
Okay. This is my standard slide that I use when I come to meet, speak about solid waste. One of the primary practices that we implement and require is that lids be fully closed. And we also have the recycling program to help people lower their volume to enable them to get their lid fully closed. Next slide. So in the wastepaper, which is our annual publication, it was last published in July of 2019, covers basically the entire fiscal year with schedules and information about our programs. In that wastepaper, we had the citywide cleanup. And in it, we indicated that there were program changes under consideration. So we did not set forth a schedule or anything about the program itself because the intent was to come to the council and to ask for consideration to change the program. And it indicated in the text in that wastepaper, one consideration is to change to a bulky item program only. And that people should check back in March of 2020, which has come and gone. I think the first time I appeared before you to talk about the program was at the end of March. Next slide. In that wastepaper, in the citywide cleanup section, it also had small items that will fit in your trash cart along with your trash and the lid fully closed, may be thrown away and collected year round at no additional cost. We have fielded a few calls about smaller citywide cleanup type items where people were for some reason confused and surprised they could put them in the cart and be thrown away. But that's always been the case. Next slide. So a little bit of history prior to nineteen. So a little bit of history, prior to nineteen ninety-four, the citywide cleanup, everything was set at curbside only. It was set out citywide, all on the same day. The entire city set out the citywide cleanup all at curb. The program was run by the street department personnel only. And how they collected the material is they used their loaders, they used their skid loaders, and they used dump trucks. And that's the way the program ran up until nineteen ninety-four. Next slide. From nineteen ninety-four and forward to today, it was changed. That time, the city manager was Jane Wood. She came to me and wanted to look at removing the responsibility for the citywide cleanup program from public works so that the street personnel could stay on what they're hired to do, which is improve streets, work on street issues, deal with the sewers. And felt it would be more efficient if it was pushed to us because we have packers as opposed to dump trucks and we get more material per trip to the landfill. So at that time, we made changes to the program. It went to the set-out location became the same as the garbage. About half the city has curbside collection, half the city has alley pickup. The set-out date was the same as the day the trash route itself. Instead of having the entire city set out at the same time, we went by trash route. We do one route per week. And again, the work was performed by the solid waste crews, plus we hired temps to come in to help us. And rather than using loaders and skid loaders, all the material was being picked up by hand and loaded into the packers. Next slide. So here today and gone tomorrow, a couple of changes that have occurred in the citywide cleanup program since ninety-four. From ninety-four through the year twenty-ten, we also had a fall cleanup program. So we not only did a spring, but we did a fall. We did discontinue it after the fall of twenty-ten. Another change was that in twenty-fourteen, we ended the free self-haul where the citizen could take program-approved materials on their own to the landfill and get rid of that material free of charge, the tipping fee being charged against the city's community project allowance. Next slide. Currently, and this information is made available in our ad that we put in the paper, it's in the city, it's in the wastepaper. The, it's on our website. This is information about the citywide cleanup program. Set out same location as the regular garbage, indicated that small items in trash bags and must be in trash bags or sturdy boxes that are no larger than thirty-three gallons. And it also indicates clearly that loose pieces will not be picked up. Next slide. Also, information that's always out there is quantity is limited to a reasonable amount. We found that the phrase reasonable amount meant different things to different people. So then we thought, well, that's too subjective. Let's go ahead and try to define it better. Well, pick up to, up to four hopper loads. Well, how big is a hopper load? So then we added that figure, rectangle on the ground that's fourteen feet long and five feet from front to back, and don't double stack. That's been a common rule for quite a long time. Next slide. We also put out there the information as far as what kind of things are not approved. A list that contains many items, but these have been, from the very beginning, items that we have not approved as being acceptable during the citywide cleanup. Next slide. So regardless of the rules, people put out what they put out. I'm going to go through several pictures quickly. Next slide. 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 These are piles that the guys commonly come across during citywide cleanup that people expect to be picked up under citywide cleanup. Regardless of the rules, this is what's expected. And finally, next slide. Now this individual, go back, not this one, this, well, this one here. I don't know if that truck is licensed or not, but I think people do hoard citywide cleanup type material waiting for the program to set their material out. So may have been storing that there in that truck alongside the other material on the ground, waiting for the program to come along. Next slide. This one, it's set back away from the street, back up by the house. Their date may be nearing, they haven't set it out. You're not supposed to set it out unless it's within one week of your set-out date. Next slide. So what we're asking that the decision that was referenced in the wastepaper back in twenty-nineteen, which has been delayed to now, we're asking for a decision to be made to replace with a bulky item program only or to discontinue and affirm what I say is pay-as-you-throw program or to continue the citywide cleanup program unchanged. Next slide. Option one, of course, would be to continue the citywide program unchanged. Next slide. To do that, the acceptable materials are bulky items. The small household items that include clothes and toys and lamps and brick brack. Small household items must be containerized in order for us to pick them up under the citywide cleanup program, not loose. Otherwise, they will be left uncollected as, and we use the word unprepared. And again, that's in our information that we publish about the program. If it's not containerized, it's unprepared, we leave it. Next slide. We limit the amount. We, again, we advertise, we limit the amount acceptable material to up to four hopper loads. And we define that footprint, not to double stack your materials. And that should give you approximately four hopper loads. Next slide. So the drawbacks to continuing unchanged, at least this is how we feel about it, is where the program rules are not adhered to, which you saw some of the pictures and some of the piles that we deal with. And those certainly aren't unique. They're throughout the city. Where the rules are not followed, you have the type and the quantity or both of material that is not picked up and it becomes a nuisance. It sits there. And then after scavengers, even when people do properly prepare, scavengers go through and they tear open bags, they unload boxes looking for treasures, and they leave that material. And we do not repackage, re-prepare the material to pick up. It gets left there. So you end up with nuisances with the type of program. Program is very manual, labor-intensive, and requires a reliable and available supplemental workforce. We use temp associates for our temporary people. And it's been very difficult, at least up till now. More recently, the last few years, it's been harder to find people willing to work within our program. I don't know, with the unemployment as it is now, maybe that won't be an issue anymore. I don't know. But the only way you really have a reliable workforce is to use full-time people. And the solid waste workers can't do the job by themselves. Next slide. The second option would be to replace the current citywide cleanup program with a bulky item only, which is, I've made that pitch before. Next slide. And there's a definition of what I consider a bulky item. It's a single item in and of itself that will not fit into a thirty-three gallon garbage bag. Examples, mattresses, box springs, obvious things, chest of drawers, dressers, outdoor grills, porch gliders, large wardrobes. Bulky items are items, obviously, that are not easily transported by the average household. Not everybody has a pickup truck or availability to a pickup truck. Next slide. Things that are not considered bulky items, that would no longer be accepted free under the bulky item program only at the set-out location during the bulky item program would include things like toys, shoes, clothes, hoses, bedside lamps, pictures, computers, radios, dishes, pans, publications, pillows, bedding, blankets, throw rugs, all of which could fit into a thirty-three gallon bag by themselves or along with other items and/or easily be loaded into, and they could be transported in the trunk of a car to the landfill. Next slide. Set-out date for a bulky item program would be established for each trash route the same as it currently is. It's just that we'd be picking up bulky items only. Next slide. So in the bulky item program, there'd be no tags for bulky items set out on the designated set-out date by trash route during the program. Outside of the program, just as it is now, the other fifty-one weeks of the year for that particular trash route, tags for bulky items are required. Trash tags would be required on non-bulky items that do not fit into the cart with lid fully closed. They don't fit in the cart with lid fully closed, but then they're separate, they're outside, they'd have to be in a bag. They'd have to have a trash tag on it. This undoubtedly will encourage some upsizing of or an additional cart. Space, as they say, the final frontier. And we would have fewer and perhaps no bags outside the trash carts, which should help with the nuisance issue. You remove the incentive for hoarding and waiting for the free program. Next slide. Now, here's a house that had their citywide cleanup set out. And I would say most of it is, would be considered bulky items. You don't, I mean, to some people, that would be a mess. To some people, that'd be a nuisance and an eyesore. But it's certainly less offensive, in my opinion, to many of the pictures that I've already shown you. Next slide. Here's another one that's, would be bulky items, mattresses, bed springs, recliners. I'm not sure if that's more than four hopper loads. I've not loaded a garbage truck's hopper myself. But it could very well be within that four. I'm not sure. Next slide. And then our third option, which would be to discontinue the citywide cleanup program. And what I say is affirm the pay-as-you-throw program. Next slide. It would be in concert with the philosophy that's been adopted by the council in the past, as pay-as-you-throw. In the late eighties, the city council at that time, they had one fee, you take everything. Then in the early nineties, the city council changed. And they said, one fee, take everything but the restricted items. They were told by the solid waste commission, which came down from the state, which came down from the feds, grass and leaves are no longer to go into the working face of the landfill, a safe space. That was outside entity dictating that special handling. Wood waste was restricted, again, by an outside entity, special fee. Next slide. Tires and batteries were restricted by an outside entity. Appliances were restricted by an outside entity. In the mid-nineties, the city council adopted the pay-as-you-throw. Some people called it the bag and tag. Tag program, it was volume-based. This is something the city council voluntarily elected to do back in the nineties. That was basically when I took over the program. The city manager was Jane Wood. And we began that volume-based program. In the early two thousands, an outside entity said, no electronics with screens, special fee. Next slide. In late twenty-eighteen, city council wanted to go with a tiered cart program. Staff was recommending the sixty-five or the ninety-five. And the city council wanted to have a tiered program to recognize that there are low-volume users, medium-volume users, high-volume users, pay on the basis of what you generate and what you need. Now, the prices that are on the slide are effective, as it says at the very bottom, on July twenty-twenty. And a thirty-five gallon cart will be forty-three fifty a quarter or fourteen twenty-five a month. In red is the adjusted price for the solid waste program if you remove the cost of the recycling program. Three dollars and ninety-five cents a month. That's effective July first of twenty-twenty. So if you take out the three ninety-five that people actually pay in red for a thirty-five gallon cart for the quarter, you're paying thirty-one sixty-five or ten dollars and fifty-five cents a month. For the sixty-five, forty-one forty and thirteen dollars and eighty cents a month. And for the ninety-five gallon cart, sixty-three, or I'm sorry, fifty-one dollars and fifteen cents and seventeen dollars and five cents a month. For a ninety-five gallon cart, that covers your trash collection that will fit within that ninety-five with the lid closed. That pays for the three weeks and the seven weeks of leaf collection program in the spring and the fall. That covers the cost of people hauling their own wood waste in landfill, cut-up trees and limbs no larger than eight inches in diameter. That pays for the solid waste program. And it also covers currently the citywide cleanup program. Next slide. Currently, we have two, what we refer to as specialty programs that are outside that pay-as-you-throw philosophy. That's the leaf program. Of course, people out there, these aren't even my leaves and you're making me rake them up and put them in a bag and haul them away. So I can understand why a pay-as-you-throw program, although they do pay the cost of the yard waste bags. And then you have the citywide cleanup program, which is what we're talking about today. Next slide. So option three, if you were to discontinue the program and you had a pay-as-you-throw year-round, you'd have no designated dates for citywide cleanup whatsoever. When they have a bulky item, go to the website or make a telephone call, find out how many tags are required for this bulky item. Put it on there, set it out with your trash. They get picked up the same day, taken away. Tags would be required on everything that does not fit into your cart with the lid fully closed, whether it be a bulky item or if it be a bag with non-bulky items, you would have to pay to tag it if it's not in your cart with the lid closed. And it will encourage upsizing of or additional carts. Again, space, the final frontier. Ideally, you would get rid of bags. There wouldn't be any bags outside. You'd remove, again, you'd remove the incentive for hoarding, waiting for the free program because there is no free program. Next slide. So there are alternatives, which some people I'm sure use. You can donate your items. Of course, there's, some of the items that you saw in the pictures were certainly things that most places would not be interested in you bringing to them. You need to have items that are in working condition. They contain all their pieces and parts. They're free of stains and rips is the best way to ensure that your throwaways do the most good. Accepted items would be typically clothes or furniture or household items. Next slide. One of the places would be Goodwill. Next slide. Hopefully yours thrift store downtown. Next slide. The Salvation Army. Next slide. And of course, if you have material that should go to the landfill, you can take it to the landfill. They have a minimum fee, which is ten dollars, and that's equivalent to about three hundred and seventy-five pounds worth of material. If you were to take one thirty-three gallon bag of trash out there to dispose of, they're going to charge you ten dollars. But you can take up to three hundred and seventy-five pounds. Now, I don't know how many couches that would be or chairs or toys or, you know, I don't know, three hundred and seventy-five pounds. Or you could bag it and pay an extra four dollars. Or you could go up to the next size cart and pay three dollars and twenty-five cents a month and get the equivalent of four bags for that three dollars and twenty-five cents a month versus four four-dollar tags at sixteen dollars a month. So you have options that you should look at. Next slide. So looking at these programs. So looking at these programs, again, I've, I've shown this before, the goals of going to the carts originally was to reduce the number of nuisances, it was to try to reduce the wear and tear on the employees. Other thoughts, some communities limit the number of bulky items per household, and they may not charge for the collection of the, the bulky item, and I might say, well, you can schedule three pickups, sofa this month, mattress three months from now, and a recliner, and not charge anything, no tags or anything. Designated dates attract scavengers. When you have a program and say, this is when it's gonna be, we get calls from people wanting to know, well, when are you gonna be, when are you gonna start your citywide program? Where are you gonna be on this date in town, where are you gonna be on this date? And we have the map available on our website too, so they can use the website, so they can congregate in focus on that particular area. And we have had a number of calls from residents complaining about the mess that scavengers make of their nice, prepared pile now unprepared. Designated dates do, however, allow for planning for supplemental staff needs. Community project allowance funds are affected, we get from the solid waste commission right now, twenty-six thousand and some odd dollars to use towards community projects. Historically, the citywide cleanup program is recognized by the council as a community project, and so the waste that can be specifically designated as being citywide cleanup material goes against that tipping fee, that fee. As far as I know, that program will continue, that allowance, but there have been taught, there has been at, commented at some of the meetings in the past, years past, when things get rough, is that something we want to continue doing? But of course, that's up to the individual communities' representatives, making up that commission, and typically, they vote for, let's continue doing that program. There, it's a loss of service. If we take away the current program and change it to something else, it's undoubtedly gonna be viewed as a loss of service. We have a thirty-five dollar exchange fee to change the size of the cart. And a monthly report that gets sent to the city manager, which covers waste management, both solid waste and wastewater, there's a line item in there that talks about the number of carts that are updated, and people end up paying the money to pay for that update, upsize. Obviously, thirty-five dollars could be something that would be a deterrent to someone stepping up to the next size cart. If the citywide cleanup program is eliminated, perhaps we would reduce the number of tags required for bulky items, that was, uh, that's an idea of one of the solid waste crew members. We could lessen the impact of making a change to program if we were to do something different with the bulky items as far as how many tags, maybe one tag for every item regardless of what size it is. Next slide. I had this, I called Wes Burlington because one of my coworkers says, well, they don't even, they don't pick the stuff up, they use a grappling hook to pick up the material. So I called Wes Burlington and I talked to the public works director there, and he said, well, we can send you our normal flyer, which is, that's what this is, this is what they have, as a handout that they give, this I assume was this calendar year, which was postponed, if not canceled because of the COVID-19. But you can see permitted items, appliances, which we charged pickup, because they charge us to de-manufacture, furniture, carpet, mattresses, swimming pools, metal and sheet, not permitted, many of the same things that we do not allow, but they, the public works only picks up bulky items, basically. And what they do is they send out a dump truck and a couple of crew members walking the curb line, and they have a skid loader with a grappling bucket on it. And all the guys do on the ground is they help move the, the large stuff to, to where the guy can grab it with the grappling bucket and dump it into a dump truck. If there's small items that fit inside the cart, they just drive by, they don't pick them up. He said that they had tried years and years and years to move from everything programmed like ours to a bulky item, and they finally got it done. So that's what our neighbors are doing. Takes them about three days, he said, to pick up the items, everything must be set at the curb, even though they have garbage collection in the alley, everything is brought out to the curb. And that's, so that's what our neighbors are doing. I did talk with Chris Clemens, the street superintendent, and asked him about their skid loaders, he said, yeah, we got skid loaders that got high, uh, high-volume hydraulics on it, we do not have any grappling buckets, but you know, certainly you could outfit them with it. But they have gotten, they have equipment that could be changed to be able to pick up things physically as opposed to the men doing it. But I'm not proposing that, I'm just letting you know what another community does in moving to bulky items only, and they've actually moved away from physically picking the things up and throwing. Of course, they don't pick up their own garbage, they privatize, so they don't do that. And I believe their base program is a ninety-five gallon cart, and you can switch that out to a sixty-five if you choose to do so, but you're not allowed to put any bags outside of the cart. If you got it outside the cart, you need to have a bigger cart or you have to have a second cart. Next slide. So I'm looking for a decision, what to do about 2021, that was what I wanted to talk about. The final proof of whatever we put in the wastepaper should go to the printer by June ninth in order to make the print and get it to the customer's hands before the start of the fiscal year. And that's the decision I'm looking for now. We could, if no decision can be made and you don't want to make that decision, we could put the same language in there for 2021, the same as this year, no dates have been set, no program's been decided, we're still kicking around what we want to do. That is an option. Next slide. But of course, this year, back the truck up, we had this unexpected development with COVID-19. I came to you, solid waste workers were, I viewed at an elevated risk, and that's what OSHA said, the virus may persist on surfaces. World Health Organization was uncertain, few hours, several days, now I saw something in the paper within the last two weeks where they say, well, they don't think that the virus lasts any length of time on surfaces, and it's maybe not as big a concern as what they thought originally. But it seems like things change on a regular basis, you just don't know what you're dealing with. They did say it's transmittable from the surface to the mouth, to your nose or to your eyes if you happen to touch your face with your hands, and that was Senator of Disease Control. Next slide. So the, the staff recommended that we cancel citywide cleanup for 2020, the current year, and we said, hey, consider the nature of our program increases the potential spread of COVID-19 because, A, we have specific dates and locations which draw scavengers from not only Burlington, from outside of Burlington, outside of our state, coming in and handling this material that's set out by the resident. Scavengers dig through it, possibly, again, causing some germs to be, or viruses to be deposited on the material, the next set of scavengers come out through and look for theirs, and then the residents are told by us, it's unprepared, we're not picking it up, and then they have to handle it, and then the city employees, and of course, the temporary laborers were all handling the material. So we felt that those reasons were sufficient enough to say, we need to cancel citywide cleanup for 2020. So you weren't put in a position to make a decision on can we change, should we change the program? It was more, well, let's cancel the program for right now, let's make a decision later what to do. Next slide. So talking about 2020, which we're still in, my preference is no program for 2020. Second choice would be to, uh, no program, but maybe substitute the riverfront roll-off containers that the nuisance department has used successfully the last few years. Time-wise, uh, you know, maybe they'd want to, you'd want to do it sooner than later because of springtime, or it could be done in the fall. The number three is you could say, well, we used to have a fall citywide cleanup program, let's do that, let's do it in the fall. Twenty-twenty only, I would say, and maybe you'd have the riverfront roll-off container as well. And that fall program could be the current program, or it could be the bulky item program, or as I said, you might be willing to step forward and say, pay-as-you-throw, that's what we've supported with our cart program, it only makes sense to do it with a citywide cleanup program. And then number four, you could just have the fall citywide cleanup program, twenty-twenty only, and not do the riverfront roll-off containers whatsoever. Next slide. I just wanted to make note, that question was asked, you, by mayor order, allowed free thirty-three gallon containers for a period of time in response to the COVID-19 and people sheltering at home, and the restaurants closing down except for drive-up and so on and so forth. We collected, we were, people were using more cans than they were bags. There was significant quantity of citywide cleanup items in the thirty-three gallon cans, they could see, you know, what was in the cans, what they were dumping, so people were throwing small items that were citywide cleanup type programs in those cans. We don't know in the bags, of course, we can't see in the bags, I'm sure there was garbage in amongst all this material. We averaged twenty-seven tons of extra material per week, which is approximately a twenty-five percent increase in tons per week. Julie, I think, said that that was seven weeks, the program must have been seven weeks.
It's close to that.
So you're talking about a hundred and thirty-five tons of extra material. Last week, the first week of no free, they put out three hundred and seventy-three violation tags for untagged thirty-three gallon containers last week. Of course, this week's a holiday week, they're a lot busier trying to get things done, but I know in the office, we took two calls today from citizens saying, don't we still get a thirty-three gallon free container? No, that program ended on May fifteenth. Next slide. Is there another slide? I'll be a son of a gun.
You're missing, I'll have the garbage.
What's that?
I'll have the garbage.
I'll have the garbage, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the, the last slide, the last slide, which should say, a decision for twenty, twenty-twenty-one. And again, I mean, if it's something we're gonna do in the fall, I know that one councilman approached, commented, said, we can't, we should do, try to do better getting the information out to the public, we could put, if something were to be done in the fall, whether it's just a roll-off, riverfront roll-off container, whether it's a citywide cleanup or whatever type program, that could go in the news, the newsletter, the wastepaper, and that would be in the hands of the citizens on July first or just prior to. So we're looking for two decisions. Both would be, could be in the newsletter, certainly website, Facebook, all that kind of stuff, I'm not a techno geek-type person, but I have people that take care of me, so.
All right, gang, fire away, questions and comments. Let's go.
Well, I think, I think I remember this from before, and I think we should have a fall citywide pickup, and I don't think we need to change the program.
Okay. There's one for option one.
I concur. I would have liked to see us follow through with the regular fall citywide cleanup, and I would like to continue to see us maintain the current level of service on the citywide cleanup. I know that goes against your wishes, Don, it's been a broken record, three years now, I'm pretty sure we've had the same conversation. My only problem is, is when I got elected to this position, and I still feel the same way today, that I'd love to see us expand the program and add more features to it, just because, uh, one of the things we ran on was trying to clean up the community, and I think the more we constrict that process, the less likely we are to achieve that goal. So I think we've made, we've made great stride with the container program, as you've already alluded to, over the last number, couple of years, you've taken more tonnage of garbage out of this community than you had previously, which is a good thing. So I, I, I wouldn't be in favor of, of eliminating that.
The greenest item is the one already made, the greenest item is the one already made. So I know I've said it before, God bless those scavengers, but I have seen that the, the landfill is, is filling up, people are generating more garbage, and they haven't had a way to dispose of it, so they are just dumping it. And I know people that do scavenge, and I've had friends that have had people ransack their stuff, and, and I don't like that, but it does keep it out of the landfill, and I, and I, I do feel that that is important. I would like to see us expand the program as well, maybe pick up household food waste, different things like that, but, um, I think that if we do make a change somewhere down the line, it's vital that we inform the citizens, not just one route, not just the wastepaper thing, but maybe something in the newspaper, or something on the radio waves, because you have to hit them multiple times, because, oh my goodness, that was a lot of tags and a lot of extra work for people to have to put on, there are a lot of disappointed citizens that we weren't taking that thirty-three gallon anymore.
Don, I will say, the only thing, and I think I've brought this up in the past, but I think two or three years ago, Charlie and myself and maybe Eric, I know Matt Ammonal went as well, but we went up to Davenport, one of the things that they do that I really, really, really like, is they have kind of a cleanup option, and I believe it's, it's either free or it's like five dollars, it's very nominal. And you can lay out on the city right-of-way, the space there, from, from property line to property line, you can fill that, and it's scheduled. One of the reasons why I like that is if I call and schedule with you a pickup on June first, then you can say, we don't want you to put it out until two days before we're gonna, before the scheduled date, which helps limit the scavenging, and then you guys would be able to plan accordingly. If you were able to come up with something like that, then I would have, be, it would be a lot more palatable to eliminate this program, but without coming up with something like that, I can't, I can't eliminate the process of people to be able to get rid of all their, their citywide cleanup stuff.
So you would be, you, you could see yourself going to a pay-as-you-throw?
Not on a tax basis.
No, 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 I'm not, not, what, what do you mean by not on a tax basis?
I don't want somebody to have to go and buy a tag for each bulky item or each item or bag.
No, 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 so like, they would call in, currently, we have people that call in the city hall to say, I'd like to upsize my cart, and they do a transaction over the phone with a credit card or debit card, and they pay a fee to have us take that cart and exchange that cart out. So if we were to go to come up with a program that, that we would pick up material set out from curb line to curb line, I'm not really sure that you could do that and not, you'd have to, I would believe you'd have to have some type of an adjustable fee, I don't know how you would determine that without seeing that, and then making sure that you get paid for picking it up.
I mean, it's not really there to make money, it's more there to provide the service, in my opinion.
Well, I don't think we're making a lot of money.
But, but, but my point is, is, um, I, if, if you could come up with something, because a lot of people don't take advantage of the program, I mean, you could drive down a street, you might find five houses that have put stuff out, and some streets, you might find every house has put stuff out.
Right, I would guess twenty, twenty percent of the people maybe don't participate in citywide cleanup.
People could call, especially since we've given them the option now, if they have a larger can to put smaller household items in it, but if people, if I could call and schedule a citywide cleanup, maybe make the first one free for everybody, and then they can have second one or third one if they want to, and then they can pay, pay higher prices for that. But if you could come up with something like that, that where they can call and schedule that, we say, fine, it's, we're gonna have a crew come pick it up on this date, please don't set anything out until two days prior to, then that would do, I think, that would serve them in, in doing what they're looking for, which is getting rid of the trash, and then for us, it would help limit the scavengers. I understand your position with the fact that they recycle a lot of stuff, but I have seen more damage caused by scavengers than, than good.
But I think, I think your idea does have merit, I think people's waste stream, as their family goes on their journey from childhood to teens to elder, the waste stream doesn't stay the same, so it'd be nice, I know. So it'd be nice, I know when I had small children, I had to have three yard sales, there was just so much stuff. And now my teenage boys being home for the summer generate a lot more. So it'd be nice to be able to make that phone call and get rid of your extra garbage. A death in the family, a different situations, the waste stream can change dramatically.
That up last time is, and one of the things was, we have a lot of people who will hold stuff until the spring, like you alluded to.
Right.
Well, what if that guy can just pick up the phone and say, hey, I got a pile sitting out there and it's January, um, instead of waiting until April for you guys to pick it up, what if I just call and schedule it and you guys go pick it up and?
Hoarding it on their porch, so it's onsite.
Well, I guess what I need to do is call Davenport and talk to them how, what they, how they run their program regarding a call-in service and how they determine what fee the person pays. I mean, there, there, there are certain piles, there were certain piles, like you said, that ran from property line to property line. And there's other ones that are relatively small.
It was in, I gave you a copy of the book a couple of years ago.
Yes, I saw the book, the booklet for their solid waste program.
Do you still have that by any chance? Because if you did.
I may have it, I don't know. I suspect I might have recycled it if I did.
All right. Where I, where I'm at on, on it, now, I'm going to be different than these, these cats. I was, I'm, I'm for the bulky. I, one, I think we have to have the fall citywide cleanup this year. We said we were going to delay it. I do think we have to have a fall cleanup this year, and probably it'd be where, where it's at now. We'd need to discuss, get everybody in agreement whether it's bulky or if it stays the same. And I think we need the rollover, and I think Eric's department hands that. So we need that for this fall. Something to kick around, and I know you need a quick, somewhat quick decision on that, but, um, given the, given the fact of the free bag for seven weeks, let's, what about if you went to bulky item next year and you did a free bag or container for a month in March? And then you did a bulky cleanup?
I can't get behind that.
They're, they're still going to hoard stuff up, I think.
Well, I, I mean, I think we, are you for citywide cleanup this fall as it is?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, how quick can you get your staff together? My recommendation would be do it this summer, they look for the virus to spike this fall.
It can't, it can on summer.
Can't do on, because of staff, okay. That's, that's my only concern.
But I think the three of us are in favor of doing it in the fall, right? Okay. That is going to be, there's an answer for that.
So there, and what we do is historically, it's the six weeks prior to, um, Labor Day. So it moves back from whenever Labor Day is September 6th or whenever it is, we go back six weeks, so, because it takes us six weeks to do those five routes, that's what we'd have to do. And then that's followed by the holiday week, which is immediately followed by the leaf collection program. So, uh, it makes it easier to find people who, because they're not going to be just working for a week or two weeks or three weeks, they're going to be committed.
Yeah.
But, you know, I find myself also, you mentioned COVID-19, I find myself wondering, is it going to reappear? We don't know. I guess we can set the dates in the newsletter, but if something comes up, then the mayor makes his declaration and that's it.
And then it just changes at that point. I think that's the only way you're going to be able to do that.
Yeah, because you're, you're, you're right, we could be right back to the same, same deal. But that would be an emergency proclamation we would make.
If that happens and it, then it happens, but.
I, I just want to say, I, I understand what you're saying about providing the service and having it available to the citizens to read. But those pictures that I showed you are not non-typical pictures of piles.
No, I understand.
And, and, and do you expect, do you expect, I mean, many of those piles were left, some of them were cleaned up, but, I mean, after a while, the guys just say, you know, I'm not picking this stuff up, this is ridiculous.
But how many of those piles were caused by the scavengers, which is why?
Well, I don't know, we don't know.
Right, but which is why I suggest doing perhaps a schedule.
Well, if you go into that type of program, then that you can eliminate or reduce the likelihood that a scavenger will get in there and tear it up. And that's why I'd say I would want to talk to the people up there to say, well, how do you determine what you, if they have a flat fee, what it is, and it doesn't matter how much material, does it need to be prepared or can it be thrown out? I can show them the pictures and say, is this a pile you would pick up under your program? Or they pay the fee, you show up and here's this mess, well, I guess you're committed to picking it up.
No, I think everything had to be bagged. It was, just same rules are just like, if I'm, I'm thinking back to the conversation we had with them, but I'm pretty sure everything had to be bagged and prepared.
The, the tough thing is, though, on those programs where it's got to be bagged, is in this, you know, it was still, you're going to have people, oh, bags of trash, and they're going to pull over their car. I mean, they go down my alleys all now, and they're going to pull over their car, and they're going to rip it open, take a look at it, you still got the same issue, that's why.
Well, that's why it's the, with the carts.
I let you guys, I let you guys talk, can I talk, please?
Oh, yeah.
I let you guys go. That's why, for me, that when we went to the carts, and we went to the bigger carts, we can put the smaller items in there, and we demonstrated that this fall with the proclamation. I think that a bulky item at least is, is the least offensive-looking item, especially with them being able to get an extra can for $8 for a 65 gallon can a month. They can throw anything they want to, they can throw anything, almost anything they want to, their heart's content in the cart, and we handle it. And we, and we'd still have the bulky item pickup. I'm not saying for this fall, because it'd be changed, but I think for 2021, we ought to look at it. And I think that's the easiest way to do it, and that, now I'm done. I just wanted to get my point out without being thrown over the top, so. So what's our decision?
What am I to put in the newsletter? Any other means of disseminating information to the public?
I think for ease for you, Don, and your staff, was to roll it out in the fall like you always have.
Well, the letter will go out in late June. And put the fall dates up as what was typically for the fall cleanup program. What about the spring, then?
Jim, go ahead. I was just going to say, I know that where Don's at and you're all having a, differences of opinion, because you can go any, any multitude of different ways. I, I know that my rec, I, I think I'd had a recommendation to you, at least verbally, this has gone on for multiple different meetings, but I, I'd like to see this year's be done in the fall, uh, on the schedule that it used to be done in the fall.
Right. I think we're in agreement on that.
Just for this time. Uh, I'd still, I'd like to keep the program, at least for now, moving forward the way it has been in the past. So seeing next spring, see the citywide cleanup the way it has been done in the spring.
Okay.
But I know you're going to go however you're going to go. I think that makes sense, at least so for in terms of where he's at, it's in or out, but if you have alterations for the future that you want to think about, that's fine, but that's, it's kind of hard to do some of those major changes that you're wanting to do as part of this process.
Yeah, we have three that are in, in, for keeping it the way it is, so it's going to need to pass that way. So that's going to be your answer, I think, Don. Even with Rob agrees, or it goes option three or option two, you've got three in favor of keeping where that's at. I do think we need to have the fall program at least the way it is, and then spring's going to be announced that we will have it, and if we work on it from there, I guess. If you can follow up on your Davenport action. Yeah? But for, we got to give him an answer for tonight.
Yeah, I think, I think moving forward, John's right, it just fall will do as, fall and spring, like Jim said, will do as we have been doing. And then any changes that we're going to make are probably going to be made late this year for next year or the year after.
Well, after you do, after, we get, we get through the fall, make a commitment to you that we will come with a firm decision as far as what this program's going to be for the, at least for the next few years. And if we have to change it, then we'll have to educate the people at, at that time. So that will be, I know you take the brunt of that from the citizens, but that really should fall on our shoulders if we're not being decisive with what we want to do. So I'll be happy to take that. Yeah, I'll, I'll go out and do what I need to do to promote it. What we're doing is we make a change to the program. If I'm around, I'm going to make, I'll make the, take that.
If I'm around, where are you going?
Well, I got one more year left, but I'm like.
If I'm around.
If I'm around.
And Don, just a suggestion for your wastepaper thing, when you say that we're going to have it in the fall, you may just want to add a little disclaimer, disclaimer, unless the virus spikes again and it has to be canceled due to situation, circumstances out of my control, something like that, just to let them know, because I know some are really disappointed that we didn't have a spring, and we had lots of dumping in the recycling bins and some other unfavorable behaviors. So if they kind of know in the back of their mind that something could happen that's out of our control, it doesn't mean that you're a slob because you're angry. That's only my tip.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
All right. Next up is an appointment. We have an appointment, which is a library board of trustees, a commission member, Becky Godfrey, will expire June 1st, 2020. She's expressed an interest in serving again, so we're going to reconsider reappointing her for a new six-year term. Is there anything else from staff? Eric? Chief? With the whole thing and out of peep, good man. Stephanie? Jessica?
The only thing I'd note, our finances are probably okay for this fiscal year. The general fund Stephanie noted was about where it's been. If you look at the, some of the balances, golf course is probably 50, $60,000 behind where it was last year at this point. Recplex is 70,000 behind where it was last year at this point. I'm not sure what the final amount that's going to have to be transferred over to those two funds to zero them out at the end of the year, whether it's going to be more or less, well, I would say it either is what we're budgeted or more than what we had budgeted, but we're going to have to take care of those. Having a $600,000 or whatever it is deficit from, cleanup from the flood is a disturbing thing to have as a deficit balance sitting out there. We know we'll get a lot of that reimbursed, but we've not seen any reimbursements through the FEMA process at this point. So, you know, that's just knowing where, where our final number's going to be on that. What, if there's a negative balance, we have to make that up, and these are, just, just know that there are, even though we're, we're able to address things, we do know that this next year, there are a lot of headwinds that we're going to have to deal with. And that's some of the context, too, as you think through what you're doing with a house in the park, rehab for a house that we don't know exactly how to handle, isn't a great deal. Our staffing isn't the same as a DNR park. We don't have a full-time person that's dedicated to that facility, and we don't hire people now that tend to be, some, some of our management positions have been there for a long time, but the other staff positions are more part-time, transitory ones. And it, you, we don't have the same type of scenario for living onsite. What I, my, my brother-in-law works for the DNR and has lived at his, at two different campgrounds where he's been assigned to them, or he's, that's part of an expectation. Well, we don't have that kind of expectation anymore, so it makes it a little bit harder to make as part of a package. But, uh, that one's going to be a harder one to work out and have successful long-term just because of the transitory nature of positions and you have so much turnover. It may work for one position, but it won't for others as you move forward. Anyway, I know that's off that piece, but, um, as you go through the finances with, with an item such as that, if, I think that the part of that that makes the most sense is for us to research whether we can get rid of, sell, sell a portion of it, carve it out, but it's still, it's still going to be an issue if that's what we come up with. The idea of rehabbing it and still owning it is just going to be hard, especially when we have it, are having, going to have some issues when we deal with our finances this next fiscal year.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Bill? Matt?
Good.
Linda?
Just farmer's market Thursday.
All right.